Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 17th, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with all council members present this evening, including Councilmember Partially, who is joining us for her final council meeting on the Olympia City Council. It's a bittersweet moment for us. So with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 We have an agenda. Also, I just want to mention again that it is the final meeting of the year, and we will not meet again until Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, for our next regular business meeting. So our first item on the agenda tonight is Item 2A, which is Special Recognition, recognizing the outgoing council member Lisa Partially. And we have a shared reading of a proclamation that the council will read, beginning with Councilmember Cooper.
Whereas Councilmember Lisa Partially began her tenure in Position 5 on the Olympia City Council in 2018 and has served with distinction and dedication. And whereas Councilmember Partially has exemplified a steadfast commitment to fiscal responsibility through her service as both a member and Chair of the Finance Committee, ensuring sound financial practices that support the community's needs and well-being. And...
Whereas Councilmember Partially is a passionate advocate for addressing the climate crisis, championing policies and initiatives to protect our environment from current and future, or for current and future generations. And whereas Councilmember Partially demonstrates unwavering support for reproductive health care, advocating for equitable access to health care, and bodily autonomy, leading to Olympia being declared a sanctuary city for reproductive rights. And...
Whereas Councilmember Partially has worked to advance animal welfare, serving on the Joint Animal Services Commission, and taking the lead on a ban of retail sale of cats and dogs in Olympia. And whereas Councilmember Partially has actively supported suicide prevention initiatives, fostering awareness and highlighting resources to promote mental health and save lives. And...
Whereas Councilmember Partially has championed disability access, working to ensure that all members of our community can participate fully in equitable, equitable in civil life. And whereas Councilmember Partially has demonstrated her dedication to equity, putting forward referral to lead the city's Social Justice Equity and Equity Commission. And...
Whereas City Council staff, community members, and stakeholders thank Councilmember Partially for her diligence in working to make Olympia a more inclusive and fair community for all. And whereas we will miss Councilmember Partially, while we will miss Councilmember Partially, we look forward to her future support for local governments and seeing the incredible things she will accomplish as State Representative of the 22nd Legislative District. And...
Now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council, on behalf of the residents of Olympia, expresses its profound gratitude and appreciation for exceptional service, dedication, and enduring contributions to the city of Olympia by Councilmember Lisa Partially, and wish her the greatest success as she transitions to the Washington State Legislature, where we are confident she will continue to champion the issues that matter most to our community and our state. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, the 17th day of December, 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor. Okay, so we've got a whole agenda up here just for this section of the meeting. So we're going to begin with the presentation of some gifts that we have for you. Sure. Why don't we begin with, yes, the council gift? So we are presenting Councilmember Partially with some encouraging words of affirmation and a photo of the City Council. Yes. Okay, and the next council gift? She's going to open it in real time.
So you can see what kind of opener I am.
Open government transparency.
That's beautiful. Read it, read it, read it. Oh, that's amazing. It's a box with a vote on it, of course.
And it says, "In honor of your service to the city of Olympia, Councilmember Lisa Partially, 2018-2024."
Okay. And also, we have some gifts from staff as well. City Manager Bernie.
All right, we've got a few gifts for the Councilmember Partially. I'm going to first ask Mark Russell, Public Works Director, to come up with a gift from really the Public Works Department. And I think you'll see this as familiar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And for the record, I'm Mark Russell, Public Works Director. And on behalf of Public Works, I just want to express our thanks, sincere thanks to you, Councilmember Partially, for all your support over the years, and most especially on the lot board, chairing that for part of the time as well. And being an engineer, it was okay that you could nerd out with us on technical sewer issues. So thank you very much. As is tradition from Public Works, on behalf of the city, we like to present you with your own street name sign.
For those who can't read it, it says, "Partially Place, established in 2017, and retiring in 2024."
Next, I'm going to ask Chief Morris to come up. I think he's got something for you. And Union President Aaron Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Partially, we just wanted to take a second to say thank you. Thank you for your just, you know, consistent support of public safety and the fire department specifically, and just always being a partner in, you know, working together to find a way to meet the community's needs so that we're able to just go out there and take great care of people. And your support was so appreciated over the years, and we just want to say thank you. So we have a little plaque for you, and then our union presidents want to say a few things, too.
Yeah, well, we have flowers. It's not a plaque. But your firefighters and your local 468 union are so grateful. And we can't really express how, the gratitude that we have with all the energy and the time that you brought forward over the last couple of years, especially with the RFA, and you name it. And so your time was noticed, you're noticed, and we appreciate you. Thanks.
And then one final gift, I'm going to ask Paul Simmons, our Parks Arts and Recreation Director, to come up for one final gift.
Thank you so much, Jay. For the record, Paul Simmons, Parks Arts and Recreation Director. Councilmember Partially, I just have to say thank you. You've been so gracious. You always lean into issues. You ask great questions. You check in. And you're always so supportive of the work that we do. And we just, everyone, when I talk to my leadership team about this being your last meeting, everyone just spoke so positively about your impact on the city and our department. So thank you. So we would like to honor you by planting a dogwood tree at your choice of either Ward Lake or Evergreen Dog Parks. So we'll do it at the entrance there. And then we will put a brick to honor your time on council. And you can either choose now if you would like, or you can send me a note, and we'll plant it this spring once the weather, once the weather hits the right time. So, yeah.
I'm going to have to take my dogs and see which one they prefer.
Very good. Well, I have pictures here. I'll leave with you. There's pictures of the location that we would plant each tree at. So I do have to tell just a quick story, if it's okay. And that's when we opened our three dog parks, it was a really big deal in the community, and they're wildly popular. But it was also during COVID. And so we couldn't do our traditional ribbon-cutting ceremony. And so we took pictures of Councilmember Cooper and his dog out at Ward Lake, and former Mayor Selby and her dog at McLean, and Councilmember Partially and her dogs at Evergreen Dog Park. So it was a special day, and the community loves those parks. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll have my comments in a moment.
Okay. Hang in there, Lisa. I know that this is a lot of pomp and circumstance, but you deserve it. You really do. So next, we just have a few speakers. And, you know, we'll begin with council. So council members, if you have comments? Any council members? Councilmember Vanderpoel.
What are you guys afraid of doing? So, you know, I've only been on council for a year now. And so it's been my privilege to work with you, Lisa. It's been a privilege to talk with you, to be able to have someone who's willing to meet with me and chat about ideas and figure things out. We're not always on the same committees. We're not always, we aren't always work together directly. But being able to have a council member who's been supportive all the way through has been, has been key. And I appreciate the time that you have. Also, I would like to say that you're not too far from us. I, a couple times a day, see where you're working. So you're not, you're never too far from us. And in case you forget about us, you know, we will, we will put out an agenda every year. And so, you know, just in case, to remind you that we're here. So congrats on the new gig. We'll be around. Thank you.
Additional comments? Mayor Protem Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Oh, so much to say, so little time. Can you hear me? I will miss you. I will miss you so much. And honestly, some of that has nothing to do with council. And much of it does. And I'm so glad that we met. I am so appreciative for every time that you've sent me a little message just to check in. Even, and you're so forgiving, because you know I see text messages like I see emails, and they're not my favorite. But you always check in. If we're doing a virtual call, you'll take care to send me, you know, a funny gif. And sometimes that's just what I didn't know I needed on a day that didn't go great. There have been times that we've gotten into things, right? Because we're both so passionate. And at the end of the day, I know that you go so hard for the things that you want to make happen, and you feel that you should make happen. And if that is the bump, the bumps that we've come across, then maybe that's not such a bad thing. And I, yeah, and I just, I just so appreciate our conversations, and I hope that they'll continue. And, you know, I'm a little bit joking, but also serious when I say, "Don't forget where you came from. Secure the money." Thank you for your heart. Thank you for your service. You will be missed.
Councilmember Gilman.
First, I want to clarify, Mr. Mayor. The agenda says council members 20 to 25 minutes. Is that per person, or is that as a group? Okay.
Definitely not.
That's my answer. Lisa, I am just very grateful to have served alongside of you. We sort of opened a fortune cookie several years ago, "May you live in interesting times", and had all sorts of crisis and adventures across these years. And I am grateful for your steadiness, and your compassionate heart, and your courage when we had to make difficult decisions along the way. And I would say that your steadiness is an important part of how we ended up Olympia Strong and came out of multiple crises in pretty good shape. So it's been an honor to work together, and it'll be nice to bug you in a different capacity. I look forward to that. So thank you.
Any additional comments from council? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thanks for being my colleague for eight years. It's been a really good time. I've enjoyed working with you, Lisa. And thanks for teaching me that some cat people are okay, too. In our family, dog people are a litmus test. And, you know, so we knew right away when we met Lisa, and there was always dogs there, that it was going to be a good relationship. And, you know, and there were some cats along the way. And I even went to the clinic a few times, and my nose didn't revolt against me. But I think it's because we managed to find a lot to align around and a lot of great work to do. You know, it's one thing to have a colleague, but to have an ally along the way is another thing. And then to have that ally become a friend, sort of naturally, has been a really a great treat in this time together. And Maggie kept asking, "What are you guys doing tonight?" And I said, "Well, it's Lisa's last night." And she said, "Is that it?" And, but really, it's important that we take this time to celebrate you. You've walked the city through a lot, a crisis, and an adventure, all at the same time. And you've definitely left your mark on our community, and we look forward to what you do next. I do hope that we can still get stuff done together, though. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Partially, Lisa, I don't know if I've ever thanked you for just, first of all, let me back up. You came on in 2017, which was probably one of the most trying times to decide to get elected to a city council in this country. And yet, you persisted through that time. And I don't know if I've ever actually said thank you as a resident of this community for that, for your service, not as your colleague, but as someone who lives here. And I so appreciate that. You've always been someone who's come to me and said, "What can I do to support you? How can I help you?" And you've always been someone that reminds me that there is a human aspect and a human element to what we do. And sometimes we get so wrapped up in the work and the business, and we forget to just say, "How are you?" And even as I'm sitting here saying this, I'm reflecting on that. And you would do that. You would just randomly text or call and say, "How you doing?", just checking in. And I think that speaks to the kind of heart that you have. I think it speaks to just the kind of person you are, that you understand what we do here and what it's about. And more importantly, I think you are one of the strongest advocates for the most innocent of us, which is animals. And I've told you this before, that it speaks to your character and who you are as a person, that you advocate for those that can't advocate for themselves. It says a lot. And so it's really no surprise that you would be here doing that work for the people who live in this community. And you're going to do it more for people in the 22nd Legislative District and beyond, for the state of Washington. And I so appreciate you for it. I've learned a lot from you over the years, just by watching. I've also learned a lot from you, just in how your approach and the way that you think is not exactly the way that I do. And there is something to learn from that, just in terms of how you really speak to the aspects of the decisions that we make that are very meticulous. And those, the minutia and the details are important. And I watch you sort of sift through that and point it out. We're going to miss that. We appreciate that. And lastly, I'll just say, you've really been an advocate for equity as well. You've been a strong voice. I think you understand the significance and the importance of the work that we do in that area. And I think you understand from your position that someone like you is in a position of privilege to do something about it for other people. And I've watched you do that. For those who share your demographic and for those who do not, and I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm going to miss you. I think you're going to do well on Capitol Campus. I will also be bugging you. And I know that you're going to just do great things, and you're going to make Olympia proud. So thank you. And lastly, I have a mayor's coin here that I'm going to present to Lisa. Okay. I just need a minute to sit with that. Okay. All right. So we will move on to additional comments from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilmember Partially, you've known me long enough to know that I can't promise I'll get through this without a little motion. So it's been an honor. It's been to serve alongside you for your entire career on city council, first as the Assistant City Manager, and then during my time as City Manager. What I'll remember the most is, in the most difficult times in my career as City Manager, you have stood by me, you have supported me, you've encouraged me, and you've always treated me as a peer, not just as an employee. And it's one of the things I value about you more than anything else. I'll never forget the kindness and joy that you've brought to your role as a council member through your entire term. You have led with humility, with love for everyone, and with a passion for doing what is right, even in the face of criticism. Those traits are going to continue to serve you well in your new role. You will be remembered by staff as always being kind, trusting us to do our work, supportive in good times and challenging times, and showing a level of care for all of us personally. On a personal level, you've been there for me and my family in the toughest of times. We will never forget the love that you showed us and our precious Izzy, as her time on this earth with us came to a close. Thank you for your service to the Olympia community. I will miss seeing you up there, but I can't wait to see you go to work, serving us at the state level, because I know that you were just going to rock it. And I'm going to break protocol. I'm coming up to give you a hug.
Oh, Jay, you're just trying to pull it out of us, aren't you? All right. Okay. So we have a line of speakers, friends and supporters of Lisa that are here tonight to share a few words. And we will begin with Kelsey Hulse.
I should have known. I get all choked up when Jay was talking, so excuse me. Lisa, I've been proud to know you for many years now. I was trying to think of when we first met, and I don't even remember at this point. But I recall all the times that we spent discussing things, sometimes arguing about things, whether it was when we worked through the Legislative Energy Horizon Institute together, learned a whole lot of stuff, I think both of us did, or when we've debated about the best ways to support small businesses in Olympia, or the best way to get more affordable housing, oftentimes over a cider or a beer. And so many of those discussions, I think a lot of people would call arguments. But I've always appreciated the fact that you approach things with such compassion, and grace, and integrity, and professionalism. It's something that I've really always valued about you. So I've been deeply proud to have you represent me, both at the city of Olympia, and now at the 22nd, at the legislature, from the 22nd Legislative District. But I'm really privileged to call you a friend. Our city is better for your service, and so I just want to join everyone else here in saying thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Rob Richards, followed by Susan Herring.
Hi, Lisa. I'm going to keep it quick. We got to know each other early in 2017, when you were thinking about running for city council for the first time. And Trump had just been inaugurated, and that was your driving, that was your motivation to get involved in the community. And we got to know each other over the years through reelection and through this last campaign. And we've become friends, the sister I didn't want. Clearly, your impact on the community has been huge, and you're going to continue that. And I just love you with all my heart. So thank you for doing what you're doing, and see you soon.
Susan Herring, followed by Cheryl Selby, who is joining us online.
I think the important thing about Lisa, and I think many people have said it here tonight, is that you have heart. You have incredible heart. And I've seen this out in the community so many times, not only with Thurston County Democrats, and Thursday County Democratic Women, and all of your generosity with your time and your money. That's not the only place I've seen it. What many people here do not know is that there is an organization, we have a Pause for a Cause Dog Walk every year for Relay for Life. My Relay for Life team about, oh, four years ago was sitting around going, "You know, we could make more money if we could get those dog people interested. How do we do that?" And I said, "You know, I know a vet." So I went to Lisa, and of course, Lisa being Lisa is like, "Yes! This is fantastic. We would love to do this." And then she not only did that, but she sat down with us and said, "You know, if you want to get dog people involved in this, you really need to get them to come and donate to dog, animal cancer stuff." So she's found a foundation, the Animal Cancer Foundation, for us to partner with and do a 50/50 split on any money. And amazingly enough, the dog people started showing up. They thought it was great. And what Lisa pointed out, because she is a vet, is that cancer affects people and animals, and that animal cancer is very similar to people cancer. So it's a good thing for... So, it's a good thing for both people and pets. And not only did she help us with her contacts and, you know, the veterinary community, but she took her whole team down to the event and had them be kind of an emergency vets there on. And I'm going to tell you, we've had one time when we had sunshine. The other two times have been like this. And did Lisa call and say, oh, well, you know? No. Not only did Lisa show up, but her whole office showed up as well enthusiastically. And that's who you are. And even though you aren't much of a cat person, when my cat and I became very ill, I didn't know what to do. And I called you and said, you know, this is what the doctors are telling me. What do you think I should do? And of course, I was sobbing and all of that. And Lisa calmed me down and said, this is what I think you could do. And for the next two years, she listened to me as I pleaded with her about what is the best thing to do. And finally, on the last day of his life, I texted her on vacation saying, I don't know. I think this is the end. And she very generously called her office and said, please get her in. I think this is the end. And it was. And after that, talked to me many times over that experience, and I truly appreciate it. And I truly appreciate your generosity and your kindness and your leading with your heart. And I think that's what we need in public service, and you have shown it here. And I'm excited about you showing it in LD22. So, thank you.
For those of you who are watching at home, you can't see, but there's a lot of teary eyes in the room. All right. So, we have former Mayor Cheryl Selby, who is joining us by Zoom.
Hi. Am I on that big screen in the room?
You sure are. Good to see you. Twice.
So, am I there twice? I don't know what's going on. Anyhow, good evening, Mayor Payne and councilmembers. First, I wish I could be there in person to congratulate all of you for making it to the end of the budget cycle. My perpetual calendar still kicks in, so I was thinking of you last week, and then I wasn't because I'm retired. But anyhow, I want to thank you for the tough balancing act. I know that it was a really, really rough year to get to a balance. Secondly, and more importantly, I want to, you know, of course, acknowledge Councilmember Partially, it was my honor to have served with her for six years. I first met Lisa at the Northwest Women's Political Caucus meeting in Seattle in January of 2017. And we all know what happened in that presidential election in 2017. So, there's a lot of angst and anxiety and fear in that room. And she came up to me and said that she was thinking of running for council. And I said, hey, you should go for it. And then I sat back and spent the next year watching her knock it out of the park with her first campaign, the first of many that she won. So, when she started on council in 2018, we swore her in in January and quickly learned the ropes of being a municipal legislature. Sorry, legislator. We accomplished a lot during her tenure, as well as negotiating our path through a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic and a national racial justice reckoning. She was always an eager learner and ready to take on the next challenge. And there are many in running a city, as you all know. Now that she's moving to the Hill, I know she'll exhibit the same vigor she showed on council. Come on, this is a woman who competed in the 70-48, which is a race for 70 miles, and you have to do it in under 48 hours. She did it by herself, not just once, she did it twice. So, this woman is amazingly diligent and just physically formidable. I also want to thank her husband. You know, for those of us up there on the dais, we have people, friends, partners in our lives that support us during those campaigns. And her husband, Tom, was an amazing wingman. During all these campaigns, they were also juggling their thriving veterinary businesses, where they were both partners in those. And so, it was just every time I'd see him, he was like that joyful warrior and supporting her. And so, I would just really want to give it up to Tom for having her back and so that she could be working with us. So, now, Lisa, you're off to serve us once again in the Legislature. Olympia is going to be well represented with Representative Dolio and now Senator Bateman. And not that it's a competition, but just don't let the other cities know that our district reps are all from Olympia. So, and I think that's a good thing. So, looking forward to working with Lisa up on the Hill. You know, you can't get very far away from us. So, it's not a goodbye, it's a I'll see you soon. So, thanks very much. It's good to see everybody. Have a good evening.
You too. Good to see you. Good to see you, former Mayor Selby. You gave us that shout out in true Mayor Selby fashion. We miss you. All right. And last, but certainly not least, for our guests, speakers, this evening, we have Senator-Elect Jessica Bateman.
It's kind of a trip to be on this side of you today, I have to admit. I think the last time I was up here was when I was a planning commissioner, so it's been quite a bit. But I also want to say thank you, all of you, for your service. Being on the City Council is being closest to the people, and we all know that it's very difficult sometimes to be an elected official, especially in times like these. I also know that the year that you're looking at ahead, budget-wise, is not an easy one. So, I want to thank you for the many hours and all of the other work that you've done while I've been gone. It is greatly appreciated. And I also want to lift up the staff and all of the departments, and thank you for your work as well. It's really wonderful to be here. I feel like I'm kind of coming home. And I also know tonight how bittersweet it is, more than most people. I do have to say, though, I did not get a street sign. Just kidding. I got a Western hemlock. So, and that's my favorite tree, so I'm very excited about that. Lisa, I remember the first time that I met you. It wasn't long after Cheryl met you. It was at the Thurston County Democratic Champagne Brunch. And I watched Lisa Partially walk up in front of a crowd and talk about why she was running for office. And in large part, that was as a result of the prior election of the former president. And what I saw was a person who was 100% authentic, genuine, who felt that they had a role to play and service to give to their community. And at the time, you know, we're, as elected officials, you see a lot of people that run for office or think, think that they want to run for office, but then actually never do. And so, I kind of took it with a grain of salt. I put a mental note in my mind that, you know, like, she has the good qualities. Those are good things, being genuine and authentic. And then I saw you get to work and actually put in the effort to meet with people, knock on thousands of doors, and really roll up your sleeves and do what's necessary to win in an election. And I'm very thankful that you did that because I got to serve with you for four years on City Council. And I think, looking back, you know, it's impossible for all of you to ever summarize all of the work that you do in all of the hours and all of the meetings and the time away from your family. But some of my most favorite work was when we banned pet shops in Olympia. We responded very quickly, the council did, to a proposed pet shop that was coming into our community. They hadn't even opened up yet, and we were able to stop that dead in its tracks and prevent puppy mill puppies from proliferating in our community. So, that was something that I was very proud of. And then also, the Racial Justice and Equity Committee that you commissioned, that you were able to take the lead on and the council took action on, that was also in response to a direct need in our community. And urgent needs are always the tough ones because you have to act quickly, but you were steadfast in your determination to do that, which leads me into, you know, some of my favorite qualities about you. Lisa and I took a lot of walks this summer because it was an election year, and it wasn't during COVID, so we were able to get a lot of miles in. And I think the things that I love about you the most are, first, your compassion. I mean, I can't tell you how many times we met a person walking down the street that had a story, like Jay's story and Susan's story and my story. You helped me with my beloved Moxie in October. And people, when they meet Lisa and they know Lisa, it's a heart connection, it's a soul connection, and you don't get that with people. Like, that's a rare thing. Your empathy for people, you give, and you give, and you give. And sometimes I tell you, you can't give that much because you have to have some for yourself, too. Your integrity, you actually follow through with your values, and your determination, of course, because you just don't stop. You're like a dog with a bone, like with the RFA. You just kept going and pushing and pushing, and I was really grateful for that work, too. I'll just close with this, that this is bittersweet, but you are going to a place that is not very far away. And when my colleagues in the House asked me, who's this Lisa Partially person? I said, she's got the most amazing principles and values that are spot-on, and she's like family to me, so you better be nice to her. We are looking forward to serving with you. I know I won't be in the chamber that you will be in, but I'm looking forward to serving with you and the delegation. The people of Olympia have been so lucky to have you since you've served here, and we are lucky to have you joining us in the 22nd Legislative District as a part of our delegation. So, thank you so much for your service.
And now, the moment, the reason why we're all here tonight, to share a few words, Councilmember Lisa Partially.
Whew. Jay, I think I'm going to be competing with you tonight. And this is a rare moment for a politician. I have avoided writing a speech because every time I got near it, it was too painful. So, I've heard tonight, don't forget where you're from. And believe me, I won't. And I'm going to share a memory of why this place means so much to me. When I was a little kid, about four years old, my parents came up here, my mom being a schoolteacher, looking for a place to escape from Portland. And she sat me on a beach and said, play with the rocks because this might be our new place, but you don't tell your brothers and sister. And I fell in love that moment because that memory is right here. It's clear. I can still remember holding those pebbles in my hand. After all the travels that my husband and I have had through the country, literally every corner of the country and in the Midwest, when Tom and I got to a point and he asked, where do we go now? We both said Olympia because it's my heart, and it will always be my heart. Olympia and the surrounding areas is my home. I may have grown up in Portland, but this is my place. It's been a joy, as I told Jay, to serve. It's not always been fun, but it's always been a joy. When I think back on everything that's happened since 2018, I think it's five declared crises. It's a pandemic. It's budget crisis. And somehow, we're back to the same place where I started with an uncertain future in a federal government. I love Olympia, and I love Olympians. Every door I've knocked on and met, even if they weren't totally happy with seeing a City Council member there and they had a lot of things to say to me, they were still Olympians. And when I knocked this summer and I got to expand out to the region, it's all the same. Our barters are arbitrary. I will always, always serve this community. And I want to say to my councilmates, we've done some good work. There's not a single person up here, there's seven, seven hearts, seven minds. There's Nathaniel Jones. There's Mayor Shelby. There's ex-councilmember, former councilmember Bateman. We do good work. I'm very, very, very proud of our collective work. We have survived all of those crises, and we've come out just a little bit better. And yes, I won't tell my LA to ignore your calls. It's a bittersweet moment. I better quit before I get teary because I love this chamber, I love the people, and I know you guys are going to continue the great work.
And now, while we're going through our procession of hugs, we're going to take a photo, council, with Lisa, and then we'll have everyone who's here tonight come up and join us for a photo as well. After we do that, we will recess for 30 minutes so that we can break bread together as a community and celebrate Councilmember Partially.
Can I say, if my brother's on, I got a road sign and you didn't?
All right. Well, so that concludes special recognition for this evening. But as I said, we're going to adjourn for 30 minutes to celebrate our outgoing councilmember, Lisa Partially. It is now 6:48. We're in recess. It is now 6:48. We're in recess.
Up next is public comment, and I do believe that we have a few folks signed up for public comment this evening in chambers. So we have Brian, I'm sorry, I can't quite read this, Shanatell, Shanathelt, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing it, followed by Jenny Ballantyne or Ballantyne. And you have two minutes of time for your comments, and there's a clock on my right, your left indicating your time.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brian Shanathelt. I'm a resident of Olympia, Washington. As you close out this year and head into your retreat, I urge you to prioritize a strong workers' bill of rights to include safety, fair scheduling, and basic protections for everyone who keeps our city running. Cities like Seattle and Toquilla have shown an impact, a positive impact for workers' protections, and Olympia should do the same by reinforcing our commitment to fairness and dignity in our workplace. Before closing, I want to extend my gratitude to Councilmember Lisa Parsley on your final meeting, and your service here in Olympia has been invaluable, and we look forward to your continued leadership in the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Jenny Ballantyne. Okay, all right. For those who are watching at home, if you can't see, she has declined for comment this evening. Mayor Protem, do we have anyone online?
No.
No, okay. Thank you. So we will move on to adoption of the consent calendar. Any comments or pulls this evening on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to adopt this evening's consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So we will move on to our final business item of the year, which is our 2024 year-end highlights. And who is setting us up for that is Kelly Purse-Brassith, our Strategic Communications Director. Hi, Kelly.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, I'm Kelly Purse-Brassith, your Strategic Communications Director. I'm honored to once again come before you on your final meeting of the year to share the highlights of the city's work over 2024. We've got a brief video, sort of curated highlights of the work. Of course, the full story of the city's efforts over the last year could easily fill a feature film or a Netflix series, since, you know, we're in this television business now. We offer you not everything, but some of the things that rose to the top for us. We organize the work for presentation to you around the city's six focus areas: public safety, environmental stewardship, organizational excellence, community livability, economy, and a well-planned city. I hope it reminds you of some of the good work in service to the community that's come before you in 2024. And this year particularly, I hope you get a sense of the city's efforts to see and support staff who do this good work in service to the city. And with that, I'm gonna hope this works, because I'm technologically savvy. Okay, something happened. I'd like to thank my staff, my staff for their good work on this, yeah.
Thank you so much, Kelly, and thank you so much to the communications team. Thank you. And there's so much work that could not be captured in that video, otherwise we'd be sitting here all night, but yeah, thank you. Any comments from the dais? Councilmember Parsley.
Just because this may be the last time I make a comment like that, I recognize that as city council members, we set the policy, we bless the budget, but the staff of our city does the work. And when you look at that year-end review, and all the years-end review I've sat through, we have to recognize the great work of our staff, because they do make us who we are. And the reason why, I think, with a little bias, maybe Olympia is one of the best cities in Washington.
Any additional comments from the dais? All right, seeing none, thank you again, Kelly, and to the comms team. All right, so we will move on to council reports. I do just have a few things that I want to mention. First, that our interview sheets for the appointment process ranking are due to Kelly by Monday, December 30th, and she will happily accept them before that due date if you could get them in. So just a reminder to council members. Also, I do just want to mention that this past week, or what day was that? Oh, gosh, what day are we on? So Friday, so it was last week. We, staff and myself, actually hosted the mayor for the day, Coral Thorpe, who is a sixth grader at Olympia Regional Learning Academy. She came earlier in the year to, you know, accept, be recognized as mayor for the day. And then we actually had the day on Friday where we spent time visiting with, we did a ride-along with the police department, with the fire department. We went to McCallister Springs, and we also had lunch with the fire department. And really just want to say thank you to the staff, and public works too. Thank you to public. Thank you to Public Works, and all of the staff who were really crucial in really putting that day together for Coral, who is our very first mayor of the day. And also, I do just want to mention that the expiring term for Robin Vasquez, who is Lacy's representative on the Thurston County Board of Health, is expiring on December 31st. It's a two-year term, and we take turns rotating jurisdictions who will represent, be the representative on the Board of Health. And so this, this coming biennium, it is Olympia's turn to nominate and appoint a representative to serve on the Board of Health. So with that being said, I need a motion from the Mayor Protem to make a nomination.
I would move to appoint Councilmember Clark Gilman to represent us on the Thurston County Board of Health.
I will second that one.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments from council? All right, seeing none, all those, Councilmember Madron.
I just want to say that I'm glad there's somebody who's like, yes, me, I want to do it. Because we're all so busy.
Yes, yes, thank you. Councilmember Gilman, we appreciate you willing to step up and serve for the next two years in this capacity. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nomination passes unanimously. Councilmember Gilman, I do believe this is technically correct, but do you accept this nomination?
I accept the nomination, and I look forward to talking about so many vaccinations over the next two years.
Okay, and I'm just gonna check in with our city attorney and make sure that we're good to go. Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, and I will start to my right the reports with Councilmember Madron.
Nothing to report. See y'all next year.
Councilmember Vanderpool?
I have one, one item to report. So on Saturday, I went to the first meeting for the Thurston County NAACP. They had their first meeting. If you're a member and you didn't know they had a meeting, it's because they're still setting up a lot of the logistics. I didn't know about it until the day of. A friend of mine says, hey, by the way, this is going on, let's go to this. I said, oh, definitely I'll go to this. So I just want to let everyone know that those who are interested, they have now established four committees. And so the four committees that they have, which kind of in a way function almost like their own little organizations, is they have a racial equity and inclusion, a reparations in education, and a criminal justice subcommittee. I was there, and then I started chatting with folks, and now I somehow volunteered myself to be on the reparations committee. So because of the interest and hearing people's voices on this, so if anyone's ever interested in being involved in this wonderful organization, please look them up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderpool, for being willing to serve on there and for cosponsoring our resolution on reparations as well. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? All right, Councilmember Gilman?
Thank you. I, I wanted to say that I visited the Islamic Center of Olympia last week, and then this morning was part of the quarterly consultation for refugee resettlement, and that they're all feeling the uncertainty that we're all talking about. So find light where you can, and take refuge in the good people around you, and know that our, our values and our principles are not going to change or be compromised here. And it's been a great year serving with you. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? All right, Mayor Protem Lynn?
Yeah, just gratitude. I love that video. It's something that I really look forward to, I think, I think many of us do, probably staff included, maybe not the staff that have to put it together. But yeah, it's just really nice. It reminds us of, of, you know, some of those key good moments, right? And, and sometimes when you're serving, it just seems like it was like ages ago, you know? Or, you know, what have we done lately? And it's like, oh, there's been a lot done lately. So, and that was just, just, just the key, some of the key highlights. It's been, it's a joyous night, and it's been a, you know, kind of a bumpy year, whether that's in the city government organization as we're figuring out how to, how to make, make a positive, sustainable budget. That actually seems to be trending. I don't know if anyone's noticed, the state's sort of doing the same. And that, that causes a lot of feelings, and, and we have such tremendous staff at all levels of the organization that have really weathered through it, and that's not lost on me or this council, and so I think about that. I've been thinking a lot lately about, I actually told our Public Works Director, Mark Russell, about this. I've been thinking a lot lately about, a couple of weekends ago, and there was, I was parallel parked in downtown, and as I was walking back and about to get in my car to leave, I was walking back and I saw a Public Works car, or a truck, get hit by somebody else's car, some community member, and there were two Public Works folks that got out. I was kind of just watching the whole thing happen. They got out, and they were, you know, they're at work, they got hit by some car, you know? They were upset, of course. They were like, oh, my goodness, what just happened? They were upset, like, that was, that's not what anyone needs during their workday. And really quickly, they see the people that, that hit them, and it was two young people that got out of the car, and they were visibly really shaken and starting to cry. They're really, they're, you know, kind of besides themselves. And I saw a switch happen in the Public Works employees, and they were going from thinking about, you know, what the heck, to, oh, my goodness, let's be compassionate, let's, let's console, understanding that these are, these are young people, and, you know, and it's such a, you know, it's a moment where everyone's shaken up. Yeah, so why am I sharing that right here on the dais tonight? Probably because I've been thinking about it a lot. I've been thinking about what seems kind of like a tense time, or we're going into a joyous holiday season, but it's really been a tense time, and there's a lot of folks sort of elevated, a lot of sort of uncertainty, and a lot of good things happen in the community, and we still have those moments. We still have moments where people take other folks into consideration, where they practice compassion and kindness. And, and it's also, it's also a testament to the heart of our, our staff, you know? So little moments like that, it's a small community, and, and you see, you see City of Olympia staff and community members all the time, and it's, yeah, so it's a nice moment. Anyways, that's what's been on my mind lately. And also, I have so appreciated this past year working with you all, and it's a bittersweet night. I'm looking forward to January, and I hope everyone has a great holiday season and finds some sort of rest. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any questions or comments from Mayor Protem Lynn? Seeing none, Councilmember Parsley?
I wanted to make a joke and said I had a lot report that would take 30 minutes, but since Danny is there, I would expect she'd take the 30 minutes. I just want to report out that I have been put through a fairly intensive orientation, and two things come out of it. Olympia is ahead of the state in so many things. They're just instituting an equity lens on bills. How long have we been doing that? They were surprised that a jurisdiction could declare a housing emergency. The work we're doing with our utility fees and setting aside infrastructure money for, to be able to help with affordable housing, there are so many examples that I can say we're ahead. But I will tell you that I'm going to write a little email, because the orientation was the best thing I've been through. I feel prepared to at least not maybe the fire hose whipping me around the parking lot, but the fire hose is starting to get manageable. And I would like to offer some suggestions for orientation for city council members that are sort of mirrored on what the state legislature has done for all of us newbies, so that we can semi-hit the ground running. And thank you again, everybody.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Parsley? I think that might be the last time I call you that. Seeing none, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I have nothing to report.
All right, City Manager Bernie?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Just a couple of items here. One is, there's one more person I want to say goodbye to tonight, and that's Mike Reed, who's sitting in the back of the room. So Mike Reed has been our Economic Development Director for the last seven years, and I just want to take an opportunity to thank Mike for everything he's given to this city. One of the things, I said this to Mike the other night at my house, we were having, I had the executive team over for a holiday gathering, and I said to him, no one really loves Olympia like Mike Reed loves Olympia. And that's, that's no slight on anyone else, but Mike was born here, raised here, and it just comes out in everything that he does. And he's moving on to a new responsibility at the Port of Olympia, and I could not be more excited for Mike to pursue what he wants to pursue, because it's time for Mike to put himself first in this conversation. And I look forward to Mike's journey and working with Mike as a colleague at the Port of Olympia, and I just wanted to say thank you, Mike, for all of your work serving this community. And then I'm gonna stay on the gratitude train. I, I want to take this moment to express my gratitude to our staff, to the staff team. Another amazing year, as you saw with the video, and the work that gets done here is done by the 600-plus employees of the City of Olympia who show up every day in service to this community. And we may not get everything perfectly right all the time, but let me tell you, the heart and, and the effort and the attitude that's brought by those employees every day is one in service. And they try to make sure they make everyone's experience with the City of Olympia the best it can possibly be. So I just want to thank all of them personally for a job well done for 2024. And then finally, I want to thank the Olympia City Council and the seven of you. We work side by side, and I've always felt part of your team with, in everything that we do, and you also deserve a lot of recognition for the work that gets done. Yes, staff do a lot of work, but you do a lot of difficult work to set policy under sometimes very difficult circumstances with lots of people coming at you with lots of different ideas, and you have to sort that out and make what you think is the best policy choice to serve this community. And I watch you do it time and time again. I'm glad I sit here, not up there, and I'm glad to serve all of you. So with that, in front of you, you have a wrapped gift that's from me as a thank you. You get to open them now, and there are, Renee gets credit for the wrapping. And I'll let you open them, and then I'll let everyone know what this is. So if you don't know artist Julie Clu, she's a local Olympia artist, and she has a space over at the Tom Water Craft Brewing and Distilling District, and I have a couple of Julie's pieces at my home, and she is a wonderful artist that captures, that captures kind of the waterfront and water. And so you all have a calendar from her. So thank you again for your service to this community, and happy holidays, hope you all get some rest.
Thank you, Jay. Can we give a round of applause to the City of Olympia staff? One second, I'm gonna crinkle this wrapping paper up and get it away from my mic. One moment. All right, so, you know, I really just want to take a moment to, first of all, acknowledge Mike Reed again. Thank you. You probably don't remember me as an intern. I don't know if you do or not, but I, that's when I first met you, and you were just so nice to me. That's, that's what I remember about you. And, and then over these few, last few years, I've really gotten to know you in the sense that I know that you are of Olympia, right? I think it runs through your veins, and, and it's really showed in the way that you have done your job as an Economic Development Director for our city. And so I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for the impact that you've had on the city, on me, and on the council, and we are very much looking forward to working with you in another capacity in the future. So thank you, Mike. I also want to thank again the city staff, and most importantly, the executive team. This is my final meeting of my first year as mayor, and we can't do our jobs without the executive team, but I definitely can't do my job without the executive team. It's, you've just been incredibly patient and gracious as I learned the ropes of this role, and I'm just so thankful for all the support that you've given me over this last year, especially the city manager's office and Susan back there in the back. Thank you so much for your assistance over the last year. And, and I want to thank my councilmates. You've also been patient and gracious with me as I fumble over the agenda and, you know, you know, stepping it from time to time in small ways, you know, as I learn the ropes of this role. And so I just thank you for extending that, that grace and gratitude to me for the past And last but not least, I want all of you, Olympia, to have a happy holidays. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Solstice, Happy Yule, whatever you prefer. Happy, happy holidays, be safe, and Happy New Year. So with no further business, before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.